I call this meeting of the MSAD 49 Board of School Directors to order. Roll call. Uchar. Oukier Brownwoods is unable to make it this evening. Catherine Lee. Davis Folsom?
Here.
Dula?
Here.
Hashi?
Here.
Hasi?
Here.
Knowles?
Here.
Lymer? Ishii?
Here.
And our white students are unable to make it this evening. So there is a form set up. Please stand in front of the allegiance. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of the October 21st, 2021 school meeting? Seven. It's been moved by Melissa seconded by Ray to accept the minutes of the October 21st, 2021 school meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Five. Opposed? Moving on, citizens input. We have a microphone for anyone who would like to address the board again. We are asking that you speak to your main and have decided. And you have three minutes to speak. The board does not interact with even let us hear your thoughts and concerns.
Yeah, come on, girl. I was actually fighting for my friends people of the district. They're not here. My name is Nellie after Melissa, but I don't know if I'm going to school like I know in this district. I had some friends request that I come here and speak, but they're not here anyhow. There are some, I know that a lot of school districts, there's talks about opening up vaccine clinics for younger children. Because I don't know if something was considered today. I was told that they wanted an vaccine cup and share this information. So these are children, few children, many, who have passed away from COVID shot. And I was speaking to your basketball, I think it was your basketball coach talking about basketball. It's going to be pretty hard for them to play. So I just, I have my doubts. I'm not being able to continue asking. And I really want to help you too. Everything that happened has signed to the CDC or the FDA. There's interesting graphs about myopernitis in young boys. There's a source showing that they just added the blood acid to children's vaccine to prevent heart attacks. And that's all source. The side effects of that medication may have an, or respiratory depression, thrombosis. Serious stuff. And my concern is going into school at any other clinic or at any other doctor in a 15-minute period where people are monitored and then there's a standby ambulance. So I don't know if this district is going to do this, but I would make sure at least have an ambulance available on standby. I guess feel free to pass out or make copies of that information. A little bit frustrating that I'm the only one who checked out and not doing it for this district. But I am already early here, I know an hour and a half, so I'm going to head out after this is over. Thank you very much. If there are extra copies, I'll take them back.
There are, um, there are.
Thank you. I'll wait for those to come out.
All of these children are 13 and 18 years old.
Good night, guys. Thanks for hearing me.
Hi, I'm taking a vote on the chief manager, I'll give events in Clinton. And I'm thinking about some students I teach in Clinton whose parents are immigrants from Central America, they work in the dairy farms and they speak Spanish. The parents often don't speak English. If I were one of them, I would probably announce a sponsored clinic, a flu clinic, not a flu clinic, a COVID vaccine clinic, I would say, I should do this. And I don't know the language, so I can't let you check it out, but I trust the school to have offered something safe. That's a great responsibility on your part. And there will be parents who are not immigrants and do speak English, who will trust the school. Of course, we trust the school to offer something safe and to encourage it and to reward kids with a get out of quarantine free card, that sort of thing. Well, of course it is, of course it's safe. And we have vaccine clinics for flu every year. That would be a really brave, beyond misleading, beyond irresponsible for any school official to say to parents, well, it's like the flu clinic, we do that every year and it's like that. That would be beyond irresponsible, really deceptive. Because this is a new medical product, never before in the history of medicine has this mechanism of action been used in a vaccine, never. So it would be gross to say, it's like the flu vaccine. It is not. It would be beyond irresponsible. And it would be lovely if you could say, well, the CDC recommends it like they recommend the flu vaccine. But you're not, you weren't born yesterday. You're not naive. You know, you say it to your friends about this, follow the money. And this is not political. It would be really grossly irresponsible for anybody in this room to say, oh, that, that sort of thing. That's political. Any anti-vaccine talk, that's political. So I don't even have to look at the data because that's political. That would be grossly irresponsible also. Because you weren't born yesterday, follow the money. The CDC, the FDA, no conspiracy theory, their budgets come from the vaccine makers. That's, that's no, that's no hidden fact. Look it up, 45% of the FDA budget, 45% user fees. It's totally above order, nobody denies it. Follow the money. Look at the data. There is a long-term safety data, there is zero beyond 18 months. And the short-term data is alarming. You could have heard a bunch of it if you could hear it. And I would not envy you 20 years from now, if a woman comes up to you and says, I can't have babies. I did the vaccine clinic and now we know so much. Now we know that that generation of vaccines, that first generation of COVID vaccines, now we know that it affected fertility. And now we know that caused heart troubles in, in young men. Did you know back then that would cause a half of a half of a percent of us boys to have heart troubles and a half of a half of a percent of us girls to not be able to have babies when we grow up? Well, it's only a half of a half of a percent. Well, that was thousands and thousands of American kids. And if they asked you, is that in three minutes?
Yeah.
Just to finish my sentence, if I may, if they asked you, well, did you know that there was a chance that that could happen? You wouldn't be able to say, we didn't know. Because you do know.
Is there anyone else that would like? Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Take just a moment. Good evening, my name is Peter Gamache. I'm a father of two children. They go to Fairfield Elementary, Benton Elementary, we live right in Benton. And I think I heard you say earlier, when somebody gets up to address you guys, you guys don't interact. But I came in with questions, you know, is that something you guys can answer?
You can ask, you can ask the questions.
And if you can, I feel like they're pretty straightforward. So when it comes to the mask mandates and having a COVID, that, a COVID clinic in school, quarantine, when it comes to all these rules and regulations, who sets them? Is it, is it the people at this table or is it like the next step up, the next step up? I'm just wondering like that, who has the power to make those decisions in our district? I guess I'm wondering, is that something you can ensure?
I don't know.
Anybody, anybody I guess. Like the mask mandates or our district, is it up to like you eight people, when kids get off the mask?
We are following the S and P, which is standard operating procedure from the CDC.
So it's you, it's not up to you guys?
It was the district, the board's choice to follow that.
So these eight people in this room decide whether kids have to wear masks? If you all voted to say no more masks, the kids can stop wearing? Is that what I'm understanding?
We are, the district's following the main CDC S and P, which will show exactly what the district is doing.
So I'll ask my question again, just, because I don't, I'm not understanding. Like if I heard recently Massachusetts districts decided their kids have to wear masks until January, they'll vote again. So like you guys, you guys get recommendations for everything, from the CDC. You guys get recommendations and things that are good health things from the next level up. And it comes to you guys. And you guys can decide if those ideas are good for the district, adding like men in Fairfield? Do you understand the question?
We are the governing body of the district.
Okay, so is there, all right, is there going to be a vote on whether you guys should wear masks?
Um, okay, sorry, we're reassessing that in December.
Okay. And that, that's up to you eight people, if like masks should stay on for another X number of months or not?
Depending on the cases of the district and how many students, sorry, three number four, um, how many students or how many cases of COVID.
Okay. Okay, so I, for you, if I have any more questions about things, is there like a collective?
Yeah, you can contact the superintendent, you can find any of our email addresses. There's 13 of us on the school board. You can find any of our email addresses and our phone numbers on the district website.
Okay, and other any other decisions?
You know what? I can't think off the top of my head. Benton, I believe is up in March.
Okay, cool.
Okay, and Benton representative here from here tonight are Sarah Williams and Lloyd White.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, before moving on, I do want to address and make this very, very clear. That if the district does proceed with having COVID vaccine clinics within our schools, they are all voluntary. Parents have to sign off and give permission. It is not something that is just going to be done. It is just, it is like the flu clinic, because the flu clinic is also a voluntary vaccination. Moving on to old business. Second reading. Is there a motion to accept policy ACAa harassment and sexual harassment of students as presented by the policy committee?
Zoom.
Is that you, Rachel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Terry seconded by Rachel to accept policy ACAa harassment and sexual harassment of the students as presented by the policy committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seven, zero, zero. Is there a motion to accept policy ACAar student discrimination harassment and Title IX sexual harassment complaint procedures as presented by the policy committee?
Oh, second.
It has been moved by Heather seconded by Rachel to accept policy ACAar student discrimination harassment and Title IX sexual harassment complaint procedures. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seven, zero, zero. Is there a vote to accept policy ACAab harassment and sexual harassment of school employees as presented by the policy committee?
Oh, second.
It's been moved by Heather seconded by Rachel to accept policy ACAab harassment and sexual harassment of school employees. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Is there a motion to accept policy ACAar employee discrimination harassment and Title IX sexual harassment complaint procedures as presented by the policy committee? It has been moved by Terry seconded by Ray to accept policy ACAar employee discrimination harassment and Title IX sexual harassment complaint procedures. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven, zero, zero. Is there a motion to accept policy Vev remote participation in school board meetings as presented by the policy committee?
Seven.
Second.
It's been moved by Rachel seconded by Terry to accept the policy Vev remote participation in school board meetings. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seven, zero, zero.
Danielle, can you just say real quick for the audience that this is the second reading? So these have been looked at excessively and this is, it looked, it appeared like maybe we just rushed through that, but they have three, this is the second.
Yes, we have the.
So we have looked at them in depth.
We're trying.
Yes, we've, we've found his materials in front of us for at least over a month. And they've reviewed and reviewed and the committee has discussed that extensively.
Thank you. Um, moving on to new business, participating with local district plan, the L, the main public employees retirement system, or we call it main purse. I like that. Do you want to start or are you? This is, well, not for me, just for me. So in materials you receive, I include a communication and copies of the existing plan. I think I put a chronological order, the main purse membership eligibility. So every school unit has a written plan that's submitted to the main state retirement system, now main purse. And on the top you have a memo from May 15th, 2018. Identifying the positions covered in our plan. You have a memo dated October 11th, 1994, from the retirement system, MSRS PLD division, with an outline of our current plan and also a handwritten note that probably gives us some historical context to the groups that were not included in that plan that are part of the employees association collective bargaining agreement and those job classifications, the job classifications not included were school secretaries and food services. And then you have another document dated or signed February 14th, 1995, by then current superintendent Dr. Edward Fabian, and the executive director of MSRS, that lays out our most recently filed plan. So that was in 1995. And I also included in that mailing, employees association, not my name, but secretaries, and there are 12 in the district, school secretaries, and food service personnel, there are 22. And I shared with you the amounts if each of those individuals opted in to the main state retirement system and the district's contribution. So it lays out the employee and the district contribution and potentially what that cost would be for those two groups. For a group of food service, it would be $30,703. And for the group of secretaries, it would be $29,623 annually for the district contribution. So there's an FY22 estimated district contribution based on the rate set by main purse. So one of the things to consider if, if the board wishes to include those two classifications of employees would be, you know, looking at budget development for FY23, of course, we wouldn't, you know, suggest that this occur right now. I'm not suggesting anything, but just for your consideration, we would submit a revised plan to the main state retirement system. And the board would have to adopt that plan as an action. And we would provide main purs with the minutes and the vote for that adoption along the language of the plan. And it would become in effect once we submit it. And that's, we talked at the last meeting a bit about the background of this. And I certainly would have our attorney, Bill Stockmeyer, who deals with the finance arm of our operation, review that. And if you wish for me to proceed, I can get the language drafted for you, for you to think about and consider, whether it be at the next meeting or sometime later into budget development for next school year for the FY23 budget. I would expect you would need to take action sometime before the end of June this year for it to be in effect for July 1 contract. The other, could I just add one more piece here in looking at potentially, and I have this question to Bill Stockmeyer, there is an option if the district allows it for employees to purchase past credit employment time. What I'm trying to clarify is if that would include a retroactive district contribution as well. I don't believe the statute provides for that, but I'm just going to clarify that because that would impact those totals significantly for at least the first cycle of it.
And you haven't heard back from me, is that what I'm hearing?
Right, I just admitted that final question today, actually, as I was looking at it. The board could opt to just file a plan and from this point forward, but if you wanted to include a provision to allow the buyback, I want to be sure that there's no district contribution to that without providing you with those numbers. Because that would depend on the years of service for each of these individuals. We brought this forward to just talk about it, to understand where it's coming from. This was kind of uncovered through negotiations, would be employees association. And because the board needs to take and adopt it so that the person go through, we just wanted to let everyone know what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, I think the two things that we need to consider as a board is all these old documents. I think we're going to start about consolidating and regarding ourselves, how we go with this new proposal for the secretary and cook. But as I understand, what you're talking about, the action, the voting committee probably would be the first one to see this, make the recommendation to back to the full board?
I think first we need to see the proposal. There would be a draft proposal, the superintendent would first bring forward to the board. And then we can decide to proceed. And I think it's just trying to figure out tonight, if we do want to proceed to update our main state retirement for our employees, update our contract with main purse.
I would think that we would table this.
Okay.
So we would be able to draft the appropriate document, review it and come up with a policy before we decide to vote on it. So I make a motion to table this main purse new policy at this time.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a question.
Sure.
So while this is tabled, our superintendent is getting draft of the document, correct?
Correct, for us actually though.
Yes, because the document currently is in light in 94.
From.
So wait, we're updating that with the same language?
We would be revising it to include those two classifications in the employees association bargaining unit. And I have totals, but I'm clarifying with Bill Stockmeyer. If, if the district also wanted to allow for buyback, would we be obligated to also contribute, you know, from one to, you know, say someone's been here 22 years? So I want to be sure that I have an accurate number for you. So I'll have the language for that revision to include those. And also a final word from our legal counsel on, on the buyback. But there was a motion to table this made by, made by Terry. To table, but I just clarified to table.
We have to table this participation in the KDL with main purse.
Okay.
And so the final documentation is ready.
Do you have that in your hand?
Yes.
All right. Is there any discussion over this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor table like this until the documentation is ready? Seven, zero, seven, okay. Moving on, there are reservations, appointments, Brian Breckham, payroll specialist.
And is there a motion of... The board, do you have any information on that?
I do, uh, Chelsea Seoni, uh, is vet elementary teacher. Um, she has recently received her, um, credential from the Maine Department of Education, uh, certification to teach. Uh, she is, um, enrolled in, um, a teacher prep program at University of Maine Augusta, and she has served as a, a long-term staff at Vetan Elementary School, um, over the past several years, I believe, um, for, currently is a long-term staff.
Is there a motion to approve hiring of Chelsea Seoni as vet elementary teacher for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year?
So...
Second.
I'm going to give it to Heather since she knows the words. Um, so I have a motion, um, moved by Ray, seconded by Heather, to approve hiring of Chelsea Seoni as vet elementary teacher for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Is there any discussion?
What grade is she teaching?
Four.
Thank you.
I don't see any more, all those in favor? Seven, zero, zero.
If I could just clarify that question about grade assignment, um, right now, currently, that's the opening, but elementary teachers, um, you know, are sometimes assigned to different grade levels based on, so just for your awareness.
Thank you. So moving on to committee reports.
So tonight the, um, the Policy Education Committee, um, are to this meeting and discuss the comprehensive assessment put together by the principals based on the needs, um, such individual school building. Um, Roberto will work on using the information to write a report, um, prioritizing, yeah, regarding, listing the district's priorities, um, specifically against math, um, and literacy. And schools are looking for those goals to improve this course. And also briefly talked about that track for, um, safety precautions for winter sports. That's it.
Thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
Um, in the way that we have, uh, things up last year, um, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. And I've addressed, um, some of my updates, particularly about, uh, PLD, but just an update on our recent clinics for seasonal flu influenza. And again, we have for probably the, I don't know, fifty to twenty years, partnered with, um, Maine General, uh, Maine General Health, um, and hosting clinics, um, so our participation, um, for this recent influenza clinic, Fairfield Primary School had three students, Alvin fourteen, Clinton twenty-five, Beth fifty-eight, and a combination of the junior and senior high of twenty-eight. These are students, of course, staff are able to participate as well. Um, we did host, uh, several COVID vaccine clinics in the school last year, um, and that was not through Maine General, but it was through, uh, Shane Savage and Fairfield Pharmacy. Uh, we offered a series of clinics to, um, staff, and we offered, um, two series of clinics to, uh, children twelve and over, um, on, on two occasions, um, with the initial and follow-up dose, and then we, we offered it again. Uh, so right now, we have, um, as our nurse reports, uh, about two-hundred-and-fifty-one, uh, junior, senior high, um, students who are vaccinated. We had about a hundred students, um, participate in, um, the vaccine clinic sponsored by, uh, Fairfield Pharmacy. We do have some tentative dates to partner with Maine General Health again for, uh, the five-to-eleven clinics, um, with, uh, December doses, um, the twelfth, um, excuse me, the thirteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth of December with the second dose on the fourth, fifth, and sixth. Um, and again, to clarify, um, individuals' understanding of what these clinics are, first of all, they are, they are sponsored and delivered by Maine General Health, um, and there are consent forms that Maine General Health sends to us, uh, to send home to families, informational packets, but consent forms, um, in a way of convenience for families. Um, I do understand that, um, this vaccine is available now. It's been distributed to healthcare providers and pharmacies. Um, I think there were other schools that, uh, were in contact and lined up clinics, um, prior to our diluxo, so we have December into January. Um, but they are wholly with the consent of parents and families, and the hospital provides, um, the informational packets. Another, um, update that I have, uh, is on our, um, school construction project. Uh, this morning I met with, um, the Department of Education School Construction Team with the director, Scott, Scott Graham and his team, as well as, um, our architect, principal architect, Kathy Cogan, who has, um, presented to this board on several occasions, along with the civil engineer that we work with, um, Andrew Johnston, on the progress of the geotechnical survey that's going on on that adjacent property, um, that includes geotechnical wetlands mapping, the PFAS, uh, radar and other survey to look at the viability of, of that property and the developability of it. Um, the appraisals have come in, um, and this is all regulated by the Department of Education's School Construction process. Um, I also talked with, uh, the department and the architects, um, about, uh, a timeline to referendum and working our way back. Uh, we were initially hopeful that it, um, would be to our voters this June. That's not practical. We have, uh, a good deal of work yet to do, uh, and we want to take our time of it and be thorough. Um, we have begun the ed specifications process, um, and that will be a document that'll come to this board, uh, probably around February, and the board will have to adopt that, and that will be submitted, um, as part of our, um, that we've done it and, uh, as part of our application for, um, a school construction project. Um, also, the architects will be submitting an application for the site that we're testing out right now. So when that comes to, uh, strongholds that need to occur prior to this going to voters of referendum and supporting it, um, and that would be the site selection, and it would be the pre-concept design that the architects are going to develop. Um, so those are two pieces. Um, I'm also in contact with, um, Bill Stockmeyer, Willie, uh, to work out, um, clarification for, um, warrants and when those need to go out to the towns, um, and being sure that it's, uh, meeting the thirty days that, um, are required prior to referendum. So we're looking at, uh, actually a year from now roughly for, um, November twenty-two. Um, we also are working to set up meetings with town vetting officials, um, for playing, they're playing, um, some personnel there, uh, fire, um, who is, uh, served in vetting by the Fairfield Fire Department. So I'll be in touch, uh, the architects and I will be meeting with, uh, the chief and police as represented by the convicts here. So I'll be meeting with, um, Chair Ken Mason, uh, in regard to any concerns that, um, these officials have about, uh, you know, population traffic, um, doubling up at this site. Um, we should receive all those survey reports by the end of this month, and also, um, I had met earlier with, um, DOT engineers onsite probably. It's been a good month to, to five weeks in looking at the potential of needing, um, a turn lane, um, developing a sidewalk, um, extending it, um, from the bridge, you know, up the hill, um, where there really isn't any, there's a walkway to the bridge, and then there's nothing, and really trying to improve, um, passage, uh, for, for children. So we will not be meeting on, um, Monday, next Monday, because we have nothing to update. We have no information, new information, there's no action to take. So our next meeting will be December thirteenth, um, and we should have some of these, um, survey results at that time. And that concludes my report for this portion.
Thank you. Um, just like a reminder for everyone here and for anyone watching on YouTube, um, where are those building committee meetings? Are they here?
They're here, and they're at four o'clock, and that's right on our site, where there's a schedule of all of our meetings, our board meetings and our committee meetings, and this Monday's at four o'clock unless, you know, we're notified a couple of other ones.
Thank you.
One thing I just wanted to add for clarification, and I have, um, forwarded, um, to the board, uh, the DOE frequently sent out these priority notices, um, and there were two that one fell right on the heels and the other, but minor updates made to the SOP responding to school cases of COVID-nineteen. And then the SOP is related only to positive cases, how we need to react to positive cases of COVID-nineteen. Um, and as we received from our legal counsel last meeting, um, and here's the DOE announcing it again on the second page of, of, um, the notice, I'm not sure of the date that was sent out, it was a few days ago. Schools are reminded that the Maine Department of Education expects schools in Maine to adhere to the USCDC guidelines for COVID-nineteen prevention in K-12 schools in order to keep students in classes and prevention, trans, prevent transmission of COVID-nineteen in schools. Um, it, it's, the understood is that we are expected to, we are required and, um, compelled to do that. Thank you, Roberta.
Um, moving on to other business, is there a motion to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA section four or five, six A to discuss contract negotiations?
Oh.
So moved by one, seconded by Ray, to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA section four or five, six A to discuss contract negotiations. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seven, zero, two, we're open now. Seven fifty-three, we are going to take a fight with that very...